Okay.
Ready? We're gonna bring the meeting back to order.
All right, thank you Commissioners. Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QAC-TV seven. These media broadcasts provide citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at QAC.org/live or on our public access governmental television channel provided by Breeze Line Cable Services. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to QAC.org-publiccomment. And citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@QAC.org. All comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on tonight's agenda. We acknowledge everyone's participation and by attending you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you care to speak, please sign up at the information table in the lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the Commissioner's review. We will now stand be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commission President Jim Moran.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right Commissioners, that brings us to the approval of our agenda for the meeting tonight, November 26th. So that's been circulated along with the regular session minutes and the closed session minutes from the November 12th meeting. They've all been circulated for your review. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes or the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda and minutes estimated.
Second.
Got a motion and second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, so we just held a closed session under the general provisions article, section 3305B1 and section, excuse me, just 3305B1 to discuss both personnel and boards and commissions. So I believe we have a couple appointments to make for the Board of Commissioners.
I move to appoint Commissioner Chris Corcoran as President of the Board of County Commissioners for the term of December 12th, 2024 to December 31st, 2025. You wanna do all three together or you want individual?
These two all three together, right?
Do all three? Okay. I move to appoint Commissioner Phil Dumanella as Vice President of Board of County Commissioners for a term of December 12th, 2024 to December 31st, 2025. And I move to reappoint Patrick Thompson, Esquire, for the position of County Attorney for the term January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, Chris.
Congratulations. Or condolences.
We'll make that change at the next meeting or we wait till January?
I made it December 12th.
December 12th, all right. All right, sounds good. All right, our other item, as you know Commissioners, we conducted interviews for the health officer position, health officer position on November 15th. The interview panel consisting of Commissioner Jim Moran, Beverly Churchill, Human Resources Director, Kathy Willis, Director of the Department of Aging, Lamont Cook, our Warden, and the Maryland Department of Health Chief of Staff, Aaron Henderson, and myself unanimously concluded with a recommendation to offer this position to Mr. Bryce Strang, who was here this evening. As this is a state position, we have to send a letter of recommendation up to the Secretary of Maryland Department of Health, Dr. Laura Herrera Scott. We do have that letter for your consideration this evening, but we will need a motion to sign that letter to commence with the final step in the concurrence process for the health officer position.
I'm going to send a letter of support for health officer for the Department of Health.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you Commissioners. We will keep you abreast of the next step in the process.
When can we expect to hear back from the Secretary?
Well, that's a good question. I would say we were hopeful of maybe getting this finalized before the end of the year, but it may be, it may be early January until they do the concurrence to their human resources review and negotiate the final start dates. But we anticipate we wanna move it as quickly as we can.
Right. I think until then, we should probably take our selection and put him in shackles so he doesn't have a change of art.
Go anywhere else, yep.
Humor there.
All right, thank you Commissioners. All right, that's all we had under the closed session for announcements, so we can move into press and public comment?
Yes.
Okay. We do have one? Okay, great.
Okay, Sean Payne.
Hold on.
That's what I thought, but he didn't.
Todd, you gotta read your spiel.
You gotta read your spiel.
You don't have to.
I certainly can.
Sean came all this way, he gets to hear the spiel first.
Stay right there, don't move.
We appreciate all citizens who are taking time to express their views to the county commissioners. Comments are limited to three minutes per person and comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing. This commission respects your desire and right to convey your message freely. When you come forward, please speak clearly, get the standing microphone, state your name, address, and topic of interest, and in keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner. And you have your three minutes on the clock up there, so, all right, now you may proceed.
You got that mic all the way up, huh?
Testing?
Come on Bruce, that's me, that's me. Bruce, know your audience, come on dude.
Thank you so much.
There we go.
All right, good evening. My name is Sean Payne and I'm from 471 Spaniard Neck Road here in Centerville. And I'm here to speak in support of a new animal shelter for Queen Anne's County and on ordinance 2417. I have worked with the Queen Anne's County Animal Shelter for the past few years fostering kittens and occasional volunteer work. I can say that the services they provide are essential to the safety of and quality of life of the animals in our community. And the staff strives to provide an excellent care and have created many programs that have improved the lives of many animals. That said, I believe that the current shelter, 201 Clay Drive, is falling short of their needs. The facility is at capacity and as of last Thursday, they have a waitlist for animals to be surrendered. Not only is that unacceptable, as not all situations can wait, but it also leaves citizens in the county to look elsewhere if they can find another option. Inventory has increased significantly over the past few years and I don't see that the current state of the shelter is sustainable to address the needs of our community. So, which is a shame because the animal shelter has an awesome staff and awesome programs and awesome volunteers that help every day, but the challenge that they're facing with space is something that needs your help. I strongly believe that they deserve a new shelter that can provide the space and services that are essential for the well-being of the animals. And I am also in support of ordinance 2417 on the creation of an animal abuse registry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering Sean, appreciate it.
Would anybody else like to speak? Okay.
All right Commissioners, moving on, we can go into our presentations portion of tonight's agenda. So first up, if you wanna turn to tab number six, and I believe there's also a copy of the presentation for our next presenter on your desktop. We have Mr. Robert Woolley giving the Edge Foundation, so Mr. Woolley, come on up. We got it teed up on the big screen here for the audience, home audience as well.
Thanks again for having me, everybody.
Yes, indeed, thanks for being here.
Always a pleasure to be here. Right left. Right left, got it. Thanks, buddy. Once again, always thankful for our opportunity to come in and share before you all of the body of work that you in part enable us to do. With your support, it's been certainly exciting to watch our foundation go from without a pulse a few short years ago to just doing a plethora of work for the kids in this county. So you deserve to be thanked for that. Forgive me if I get a little off tonight because it's a little bit of an emotional time for us. Colleen Williams, who was our Director of Operations for the last few years, has decided to step down and be Mom of the Year, so we applaud her for that. She has been absolutely integral to the getting the foundation up on two feet over the last few years and keeping it relevant to the community. So we wanna make her publicly aware of her appreciation and the time that she's given to us. So, that being said, if you don't know me, I'm Robert Woolley. Started this foundation back in 2013 by an anonymous donation to support kids with advancing opportunities in the community, whether it be athletically, partly due to athletics or not, our mission has widely expanded over the years to support kids in a lot of different ways. And as we go through this, I think you'll see that it's been pretty awesome of late. So, quick, just so that the public hears, our mission is for young people to grow into successful, caring, responsible, and productive adults by building partnerships and community support. We achieve this through providing opportunities for youth to engage in community service projects, character development, scholastic achievement activities, and supporting our youth's social and emotional needs. Four major areas of impact, after-school and extracurricular activities, scholastic achievement programs, community events, and leadership programs. I'm gonna try to buzz through this just so you know, so we can leave some time for comment or questions if you have any. One of the marquee events that we really pour a lot of effort into each year is Field Day for the public schools in the county. Many years ago, I was asked to do it at one school long before Colleen joined us. That grew to two schools because we had kind of poured a lot into it and the staff of each of those schools realized that it was a pleasant relief to have the day kinda back and watch the kids just have fun with all the volunteers that we were able to provide to make sure the kids are having an awesome time. What that's done over the last 10 years has gone from two schools to five schools to 10 schools, and I'm so excited to report that in 2025, we've already got slated, all 12 of the elementary and middle schools will be receiving our services this year. So what that looks like, if you've never attended, 100-plus high school volunteers that come out from the different Ken Island and Queen Anne's to support giving back to the community and making sure that those kids are having a great time. And as it says in our mission statement, we really try to lean on community partners and see who else is willing to come to the table and help us on those days because it's a pretty big lift, a pretty big lift. You see there, well, last year, we basically covered 5,000 kids in five days. So if you can imagine, I think one day we had four or five schools running simultaneously. And we're giving high school kids the chance to truly step up and lead the entire day, right? Colleen would start in Southersville with breakfast and fly to Centerville and, you know, pit stop at all the schools. QAC-TV followed us around for the day. We've brought in partners like the Bay Sox and just various awesome elements where kids, if you can rewind the times to when you were in their shoes, you know, the Bowie Bay Sox mascot at your field day might mean something, you know? So it's pretty neat to see where we've taken it, 115, 115-plus volunteers last year. We're probably looking to significantly increase that this year. The one unique thing that we do every year is provide T-shirts to all students and all staff. So we really try to provide a unity message across the entire school ecosystem. And what we find when we show up is oftentimes, teachers will take it upon themselves to tie-dye their school or their classroom to make sure that they all look kind of alike, right? But there's a unity message and we always try to promote our win-the-day kind of mindset between all the programs that we offer, but this one's a huge one because we're able to put that message on a shirt and people really buy into it. So, and it's neat because you get to see those shirts kinda wander through the entire community and they wear it almost as like a badge of honor with, you know, it's pretty unique. So, yeah, 12 schools this year, pretty excited about that. We are in the process of accepting submissions for our Win the Day Essay Contest. It's something we've done for several years now. Started off in 2016, gives kids outside of athletics a chance to voice how they win the day. It's something that you'd be astonished and I'd love to share some submissions to you all to just kinda breeze through. It's the everyday kid that goes home and has to, you know, do things for the rest of the family that can't even participate in sports or, I mean, the scope of submissions that we get are quite impressive and certainly touching to read many of them. So that's gonna close here on December 6th for our high schoolers. That's live and I can share a link or it should be live out on our website if anyone's interested in getting that out to a student that they might know. They receive a scholarship fund for their winnings and most of them choose to tell us how they intend to use it for their collegiate advancement or in our middle school program. They don't get to use it for their own personal. They get to tell us what foundation or what nonprofit charity that they'd like to support and we make that donation to that entity for them. So it's pretty neat because each of their stories, it has a, this is about me and then this is where I wanna support others. So, I mean, it just takes it to the next level, so, pretty unique. As I cruise through this, next one is Win the Day PBIS. Positive Behavior Incentive Systems have been part of Queen Anne's County Public Schools for many, many years. What we found in the current economic climate is that a lot of funding has been reduced or cut altogether in some of the schools. So we're the first ones to reach out at the beginning of the school year to find out what stirs their student body to be good-hearted, helping kids. And every school is completely different. The story that we get from one is, you know, at Centerville Elementary School, for instance, they were really interested in getting, picture like a Care Bear, but a mini lion for their mascot, custom embroidered, like that was something that they felt like they just had to have. So of course, we're like, all right, well, how do we do this? You know, we need 720 bears. We go to our vendor and we figure out that, all right, he can source us these little lions and before you know it, Centerville Elementary School was handing out Student of the Month Bears left and right to the point where, you know, it's a costly undertaking, but we know that it's what the school said that they felt would stir the kids and that's where we have to place our dollars to make the most impact possible. So that's just one example. That's just as of a month or so ago. Super, super incredible when you're walking up to the school and you got like six boxes of, you know, stuffed animals and they're just going nuts over it, so we're proud of that one. Today's example, literally today, Stevensville Middle School, same type of scenario, came to us at the beginning of the year, chit-chat, got to the point of like, what's your monthly thing that you wanna do for the kids? They lay it out on a calendar, they give us a price point that it looks like what they need to support it. Hey, we don't have any funds this year, this is what it would be. And just today, they had a, I wanna say 132 kids participate in a flag football tournament over at the high school. So we were able to pay for their transportation to get from Stevensville over to the high school and then provide 17 volunteers at the high school to be the referees on the field, all wearing volunteer T-shirts, so they stood out. And if I can quote Melissa Osborne, right?
That took place today Bobby?
Yeah, it was just today. So I just got the final count of 132 kids that, quote-unquote, "It was a great day, the high school refs had as much fun as the middle schoolers." And the middle schoolers were all asking, can I ref when I'm a high schooler? It's something so simple, but at the end of the day, Stevensville Middle School was a brighter place today because of, I think, the conjoined effort of, you know, what we're there to try to patch up the holes in the ship when the pirate ship needs it. So that's today's example. I could go through a bunch of those, but we've got 12 schools actively programming within that. Probably one of the most important things that we have going on right now, and I'm sorry for getting up on time, Interact Leadership Cohort has doubled in size since 2022. That happens at Ken Island High School with a partnership. Dixon Valve up here in Chestertown, they bring a HR guy down to help facilitate some of those lessons. It's all about leadership. These kids are coming in before school, 6:45 to show up on Friday mornings to meet with us, to learn about themselves, what it takes to be a better person, all the good that you can possibly deliver into a 6:45 session with breakfast.
Well, you know they're all in if they're there at 6:45 in the morning.
I mean, if you look at that picture, that's a group right there of kids who are 60-plus deep and just hungry for figuring out how to be a better person and how they can best lead their peers and be community advocates. So it's pretty special to see. That is also a little bit of a thing that kinda plays into our monthly acts of kindness. We've launched that this year. We're doing lunch and serves at the high school where kids all in their lunch period just come in and do something for veterans, do something for a local kid in need, you know? It's just the thing of the month that we try to put in front of the entire student body to help support that. And it's really going well. I mean, you don't know how it's gonna go and kids are gonna laugh at it or kids are gonna entertain it or not, and when I tell you that they're all in, it's pretty impressive to see that the entire student body jumps in for an opportunity to serve and give back. Yeah, on that, just recently, probably my biggest in 12 years element of awesome, when the Ravens reached out and said, hey, we need to recognize you guys for the efforts you're doing in the community. I mean, come on, this is Queen Anne's County, right? Like born and raised here, like it's pretty special to hear those words. I think the program description says enough where I highlighted outstanding service to our communities. It's incredible when you really try to measure the impact. And I'm not trying to toot any horns or anything, I'm just so darn proud of it. Like the fact that someone like this would come out and give us an opportunity to bring 50 kids to an NFL game, many of which had never attended a game, never probably considered going to a game, just pretty darn cool. Got some good press out of that. Those kids were so excited, got a state citation from the governor's office on the field with representatives from their office, so just...
They got announced.
Yeah.
They got announced on the PA system?
Yeah.
And they were all wearing their shirts?
Am I tacky enough to get that video to load? Come on. How do I do that?
Bruce is.
Come on Bruce.
Bruce can do it.
How's my time?
You're good.
Okay? Hopefully. No, it's not me, it's Bruce.
Maybe he can, maybe I oversold him.
I was at the game.
I didn't think Bruce could do it. I mean, I just...
You were bending the guesting?
No, he did.
Oh, blip in the end. Here comes the disclaimer.
Hey, we can move on. Just a video that depicted everything that happened that day and yet halftime, they were put on the Jumbotron and going nuts and...
I was there at the game, it was amazing.
Yeah, there you go.
I wasn't with the group, but there was a sense of pride when they announced the group.
Yeah, I mean, pretty cool stuff. So we'll get you off the hook there Bruce. All right, we'll move on. Thanks for your reference, pal.
We're lack thereof.
Now I can't, now my left, right...
He's got it all nosed up.
Can you click? Uh-oh. All right, so new in 2025, we're trying to get to the point where we can run a leadership summit. We've got kind of a big dream there to bring 200-plus kids to a situation where guest speakers and keynote speakers can really deliver key messaging to them and kinda reward them for all of their give back for the school year that they've poured in. Just another tidbit of a way that we can extend our efforts and make sure that they're getting everything that we can possibly offer them. It's a big undertaking, we're doing it. Linda Kohler's been helpful over at Chesapeake Charities in trying to really put the pieces together to make it a reality, so...
When do you think you're gonna try to do this?
Either at the Beach Club or down at Jody's Place.
When?
Oh, April 6th or 27th.
Okay.
It's a date to be determined. On speaker availability is really what's dictating the one or the other date.
Right.
So that's been earmarked and trying to be a work in progress. We just finished up our second Clay Shoot Tournament. We have multiple fundraisers a year, just trying to pitch into the bucket to give back. That was well- well-attended, 40-plus people came out and had a good time down at Penn Tail. Each year, we do this bounce in the winter event. It's this Saturday, awesome, fill the entire arena with bounce houses, it's free to the public, it's tied up with Tides of Grace. If you guys are familiar with Leanne and her group, we collect toys for them to get in. We have 400 to 600 families typically come in and, or 400 to 600 people come in and drop toys for their shopping event, which will be at the arena the week after. But if you've never touched base with Tides of Grace, like they're off the charts, I'll put it to you this way, I walked into my own building last year when they were doing their shopping event, and I promise you, not since I was a child that I felt the Christmas spirit in real form. Christmas spirit was in that building. I mean, you could just sense it everywhere. It's a huge undertaking and they do a lot of great work there. So that's this Saturday and then Elegance with an Edge Gala is our big annual fundraiser and that's in March, March 15th is it, that'll go live for ticket sales in the next week or so. So that's kind of us in a nutshell right now, just from the foundation side of things.
So that's the best way for anybody who's listening or watching the meeting tonight where they can find more information about giving the edge and volunteering or making donations?
Yeah, our website, I mean, that's an email address to us, but our website is theedge360.net/gtef and that'll give you everything you need to know for how to be involved and support us. Questions?
Outstanding work.
You're not busy.
And then of course, on top of that, your father, your husband, a successful lacrosse coach at our high school.
State championship lacrosse coach, yeah.
I didn't come here to talk about that, fellas.
But since you brought it up.
It's all part of the package, though.
No, I mean, no, it's true that, you know...
Time is something that's tough to manage sometimes, so...
Yeah, and it didn't help that it took 20 minutes to get off Ken Island today. We won't talk about that tonight either.
Hey, that's Jim's problem. Grab Jim.
Yeah, no.
Cut the video.
Oh, here we go. Way to go Bruce.
I knew you could do it Bruce.
That's awesome.
Cool day, definitely a cool day.
Questions?
Bobby, I don't. Thank you for everything that you do.
Absolutely, great job.
Thanks everybody.
Hopefully it doesn't take you that long to get back home.
Oh, no. I got kids to get to now.
Oh, there you go. All right, thank you. You're my challenge coin, Phil. You always tell them to get you out of a sheriff's...
Get you out of a sheriff's. Hold you over, just flash this, say Jim Moran gave it to you.
You ready to move on Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
All right. Our second presenter tonight, under tab 6, item 2, pages 2 through 7, is Director of Budget and Finance, Jeffrey Rank. So Jeff, you wanna come on up? Got a presentation up on the screen and it also is in your book under tab 2, or excuse me, tab 6, item 2, pages 2 through 7. And this is kind of a preview of the capital plan for FY '26. We have a lot of big projects coming up, we have a lot of, some new ones. We haven't solicited, you know, all the departments for their projects for next year yet, but that'll be coming in the next couple of months, so we'll be getting more, I'm sure, but we wanted to kinda just give you an overview of kinda where things were. We have a lot of ongoing projects and some big ones on the horizon, so we wanted to just give you an opportunity to refresh yourselves with those and then we can proceed... proceed on with the budget process for for next year. So Jeffrey?
Good evening, commissioners. We just wanted to give you a quick preview of some of the major capital projects currently in the planning stages for the upcoming five years. Note that we have not received this year's updates, additions, plan modifications yet. This process, as Todd said, will begin next week.
Hey, Jeffrey, do me a favor, pull that mic a little bit closer to you.
Absolutely. Due to the fact that we have more projects, more costly projects than usual, we wanted to get an early start with this review process with all of you. No decisions need to be made this time. This is just an overview. This is the sum total of capital project expenditures currently programmed for the current year and planned for the next five years, which is currently at about two hundred eighty-five million. For some context, going back twenty years, our average capital plan was about thirty-one million per year. If inflated the current current twenty twenty-five dollars, it's about thirty-five million per year. If we stick to this average, which has been our current comfort zone, this puts us at about ninety-six million above that threshold over the next five years. Here we have our list of major projects. We wanted to go over quickly. We've got the detention center, the new regional detention center in Churchill coming up, which is programmed. Our share would be about twenty-four point two million. We've got a potential Centerville Middle School at twenty, twenty and a half million. The VREX Center, twenty million.
The middle school, is that it's renovation?
It's a potential replacement, I believe. Is what the Board of Education is requesting. A new sheriff sheriff's office at sixteen million. The historic courthouse renovations at ten million. Cloverfield flood mitigation program at seven and a half million, of which five point six is we expect to be covered by a FEMA grant. Animal Services Building at six, a little over six million. The Chesapeake College Technical Building at five point seven, which I think was recently is down to about a little over four now. Playground equipment through the Parks Department, five point six million. Emergency Services Building renovations at four point three million. And Queen Anne's County High School and Kent Island High School addition studies, both currently estimated at four point one million each, which should could be covered by the our our collected impact fees. On the next page, we have a continuation of our list. We've got our University of Maryland Shore Regional Health Center allocation three point seven million remaining of the five million allocated this current year. Parks Trail Development and Maintenance at three point three million, of which four hundred thousand covered by grants. The Chesapeake Heritage Visitors Center renovations and replacements at two point one million. Nine nine one one phone center refresh, one point seven million, although fully covered by grants. Four H Park Improvements, one point six million. Queen Anne County Library North Branch, which would be a renovation of a current storefront programmed at one point six million, half of which would be covered by grants. The Emergency Services Motorola Console Upgrade, one point five million. Parks Box Lacrosse Fields, one million. Parks Pedestrian Bridge Maintenance, one million. And for the Roads Department, the pedestrian bridge crossing at US fifty-three oh one, twenty-two point nine million. Thompson Creek Connector, seven million, both of which we are actively seeking grant funds for those two projects. And on the next slide, we have some newly requested projects that just came about in the last month or two. The library is requesting funds for an expansion of the Centerville Branch or a new library at Providence Farm. They need they need more off-floor desk space. And they have some space concerns regarding mobile library materials. The the Board of Elections has also requested a new facility. They've outgrown their current space of three thousand square feet and requesting a facility of eleven thousand square feet, which would include warehouse space, lobby space, office space, and other flex spaces. And then, of course, upon the the final construction of the Board of Ed at the new Board of Education Administration Building, we'll have the old Board of Ed building that we will take ownership of within the next year or so. And would require renovations or some decisions regarding potential uses for that facility. I also spoke with Steve Cohoon regarding future Board of School enhancements and Centerville Elementary, Kennard Elementary, and Kent Island High School are approaching capacity. Potentially Mata Peak, the Mata Peak Schools, both the elementary and middle may very well hit capacity soon with the Southern Kent Island buildout. And Graysonville Elementary as well may very well hit capacity with the Perry's Retreat. All could be ripe for expansion within the next five to eight years. The next three slides show our our three debt measures where we keep a handle on current and future debt as related to caps that we've set through our debt management policy. The first of which is debt. Debt as a percentage of general fund expenditures. We have a cap of ten percent. And as you can see, over the next five to six years, we will not hit that cap. And we'll still be remain within compliance of this measure of our debt policy. Our second measure is debt as a percent of real property assessable base. We have a cap set at two point five percent. And again, we will remain in compliance hitting a a high of about one and a half percent at the end by twenty thirty. Thirdly, our third measure is per capita debt as related to per capita income. Our our debt policy states a maximum there of eight percent. And again, we're still in compliance with a maximum of five percent come twenty thirty. This next slide kind of shows our debt service, our potential debt service over the next twenty years. The green line shows an average inflation rate over the past fifty years, which is right around three percent. Ideally, the red line shows debt service increases year over year. The the blue line is principal and the orange line is interest payments over the next twenty years. This debt matches our current requests as of this month through twenty thirty. After twenty thirty, I plugged in our ideal average debt increase of of about sixteen million per year. So what I was trying to show here is that we'd really like that red line to stay close to the green line, which is the average inflation rate. When it jumps around like that, especially these next five years, it can really impact our our operating budget. And yeah, we want to keep it close to three and I'll explain why in a moment. What does all this mean? Ideally, we could have a like to kind of have a fresh discussion of commission priorities regarding the capital plan. There's a potential need to rearrange the timing of major projects and smooth the annual debt additions so as to not create wild swings in our in our debt service payments. And need to have a fully prepared project and spending plan to get projects underway in a quicker fashion. We are working closer with the Board of Ed regarding their projects and meeting with them quarterly to kind of keep in better sync with their programming. And the caveat that I wanted to to mention regarding our our debt burden is that the measures that we've that I've shown on the previous three slides are recommended by the Government Finance Office Association for counties nationwide. An important thing to note is that counties in Maryland have burdens that most other counties in the country do not, namely, we are required to provide funding for the local boards of education. We also have to pay for county road systems to a higher proportion than most other counties in the country. And we also have high levels of service for public safety efforts in the county. Excluding funding for the Board of Education, we typically keep annual our county's annual cost increases very close to the annual inflation increases of three to four percent. So for each year, debt service increases at rates above inflation, cuts must be made to other county services to include public safety and education, roads and park maintenance, et cetera. As you saw on the previous chart, all else being equal, to include keeping the same tax rates, we would expect service levels in county funded functions to decrease, to cover increases in in those debt payments. And again, we're in the future, we're recommending a a smoother, flatter debt burden from year to year rather than, you know, wild increases. You know, we don't want fourteen, our debt payments got fourteen percent next year and then two percent the next year and then ten the next. It's when that happens, we find it difficult to maintain our current levels of service with all the other things we have to pay for in the county. And finally, that being said, I just wanted to do a quick review of the capital budget schedule. Monday, the capital budget packets go out to the departments for them to begin preparing their their next year's capital budget, their next year's capital plan. And those are due on January tenth. Early to mid-March, we have our meetings with our county administrator, Mr. Mann. And the March twenty-fifth, he submits his proposed budget to you all. And then we'll have our budget work sessions at the end of March, early April. And finally, ideally, adopt the budget on June tenth. So I just wanted to kind of give you a quick update on potential upcoming projects. We may have some work to do this year, but looking forward to to working with Mr. Mann and the commissioners to develop these priorities and come up with a reasonable, affordable plan.
Todd, something similar to this going to be part of the state of the county that we're going to be doing on January?
Yeah, we can we can discuss, you know.
I mean, I didn't
Sure.
whether I just didn't know. My question is, is you know, a condensed version of what Jeff just did going to be part of that state of the county?
Yeah, we'll definitely provide an overview of the economics and, you know, where we stand financially, but we're we're in good shape. We just wanted to give this update so we could look at some of these projects because everybody we meet with them every year and they all want their stuff like now, right? And so we're kind of jammed up here in the next couple couple of years and there's some stuff in the out years too, but you know, we just want to make sure we hit the right priorities, you know, for the board and and move those forward accordingly. But it's all good stuff.
Jeff, thanks for keeping us straight.
How realistic is that?
Nothing like too many options.
Mr. Director?
Uh, yes.
How are you? Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I'm going through this and I'm looking at the twenty twenty-six, that part thirty-one, do we have a template from a lot of the six years prior, so it would be nineteen to twenty-five, therefore twenty nineteen? Just to compare it, just so I can look at the difference in the debt?
Yes, we do.
Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, we have that and I can I can provide it to you all.
Thank you. Would you, just at first blush, are we in that same category as we were when this was done five, six, seven years ago? Or is debt cost?
No. Actually, over the past two years, we haven't added any debt. But the next three years, there's a potential for a good bit of debt to be added. But yeah, I can I can send you a historical chart of the past ten years or so.
These numbers that we have here, are these just sort of rough estimates? Because I'm just looking like Centerville Middle School, for example, twenty million. That sounds to me like probably low.
What's forty?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, these are the state shares.
So we're assuming then that it's that capacity that the state would then kick in and.
Well, they would. They would do it anyway.
That's okay.
Yeah, same with the regional detention center and the Chesapeake College project. That is just our our county's portion.
But some of these too, we got to keep in mind, and I guess we need to disseminate those out, rely on state money to start with before you can even really worry about your half. So some of these are going to be dictated by the state's financial situation, which we all know is pretty dire.
Yeah, that that's a great point, Commissioner Wilson. And in fact, we've the the biggest one that we have on here is the Detention Center. And we've been asking for the advancement of the state share of that revenue sooner versus later. So and surprisingly, we are having a meeting with the state representatives from the State Department of Corrections on December ninth. They want to come down. The new leadership wants to come down and tour our facilities, also the facilities in Caroline and Kent. And hopefully the EPRU site. And hopefully they'll support, you know, the project moving forward, you know, sooner versus later, because we've we've got a pretty good head of steam up right now. We want to continue the design effort. So that's a that's one example where we are going to be relying on that state funding to continue those efforts.
And the tech center to college.
Tech Center, another example. Yeah, Chesapeake College Tech Center, Queen Anne's Tech Center.
Centerville Middle School because of the new ranking and what they're going to do to school rankings, just similar to the highway projects. They've revamped in that whole system. So it's going to be a needs-based system, so.
And that could change again, too. I mean.
Absolutely. I mean, yeah. It just changed this year, so.
Depending on what happens at the federal level, right, how education funding is at the state level could drastically change as well. There's a lot of unknowns.
Lot of moving parts coming in next year right now. Financially speaking.
Very well.
Well, I don't know if it was very well.
We'll certainly keep you abreast of things, but clearly it's a lot of these are dependent on state shared revenues, grants and things. And those are the ones that we can leverage additional dollars for locally to advance. That also is part of the decision-making process going forward, so we'll we'll keep everybody abreast of those opportunities. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeffrey. All right, very good.
All right, commissioners, that concludes all the presentations for this evening. So if you want to move over to the legislative portion of the book and the agenda. So next up, we have so that'd be tab number seven, item one, pages one through nine. The first item we have under legislative is the County Ordinance twenty-four oh nine as amended. This can be voted on, and this is the bill for the short-term rental program for the purpose of regulating short-term rentals in Queen Anne's County.
So before I read the amendment that I'm going to propose, I just wanted to say, I think there's been a little bit of misconception about this whole having an agent, qualified agent, somebody who can be contacted. It can be your neighbor. It doesn't have to be somebody professional that you're paying to do it. It could be your neighbor. It could be anybody you trust to do it and actually perform the duties that's being asked. It's really not. Yeah, that too. Right. So my amendment is really going to be an amendment to the one I made at the previous meeting, which is basically to extend the area outside of Queen Anne's County to the eastern shore, but still basically not allowing anything from across the bridge because of obvious traffic situations and other things that can arise if something were to happen. So. obvious traffic situations and other things that can arise if something were to happen. So, so for the purpose of amending ordinance 2409, will require that the property owner or property manager is located in Queen Anne's County or an adjacent county on eastern shore of Maryland and available at all times during the short-term rental occupancy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved.
And then I would like to make a motion to adopt County Ordinance 2409 as amended.
Second.
Well, a motion and a second on this item. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved.
And then I would like to make a motion to adopt County Ordinance 2409 as amended.
Second.
Well, a motion and a second on this item. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved.
And as a real quick footnote, based on our conversation today, maybe it's good to share, this rollout, granted, the ordinance takes effect in 46 days under normal circumstances, but this rollout is probably going to be much longer. We were thinking six, eight months, whatever it may take to get everything. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I would say that it would take, yeah, it's going to take a concerted effort to roll this out over the next 46 days and there'll be another secondary period beyond that. So we'll be notifying all the STRs, the short-term rental owners of the, of the requirements and get the inspection scheduled and let them, you know, work their way through the process to get, get their certifications quickly as they can, but also, you know, knowing that we're going to have some constraints time-wise to get that done.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right. All right, Commissioners, the next item we have is County Ordinance 24-17. This is the, we had a hearing on this at the last meeting for the animal abuse registry. And this is a act concerning establishment of an animal abuse registry in Queen Anne's County. So this can also be voted on, amended or adopted.
Motion to adopt County Ordinance 2417.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on this?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. There is factual data that supports the fact that when you have some folks that are found guilty or are abusing animals, in a fair amount of those cases, the cruelty to animals becomes something much greater concern, and that is the cruelty to humans. There's actually been some scientific data that actually supports the fact that there's a percentage of these animal abuse folks that are guilty of this that take that aggression out on humans as well, including our elderly. So this is a great piece of legislation that's going to hold these folks accountable that when they are on that registry, that we're, we're well aware of their existence, much like the report that we get with the child abuse register that has to take place. So I think this is a huge step in the right direction in protecting animals from getting in the hands of folks that are actually on that register and have been found guilty of animal abuse in the past, so.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. That is all of the legislative items for this evening, so we can now move into action items. First, we have the Department of Public Works. We have actually two informational items, so gentlemen, come on up. The first informational update is on the pedestrian bridge. We talked about that briefly under Jeff's presentation with the pedestrian overpass to connect the Cross Island and South Island Trail. So Chief Engineer, Chief Roads Engineer Shane Morris on some research on that with Parks and Recreation, and he's got some information to report here this evening on the costs associated with the pedestrian bridge and some next steps. So Shane.
Thanks, Todd. I was requested to get some information on construction costs of current pedestrian trail bridges, similar to what would have to be designed and built over Route 50 in the Ken Island corridor. Kimberly Horn was under contract to do some preliminary evaluation. Their estimate using the MDOT cost estimator came out to about $8.1 million. Again, these are just construction dollars. This is no engineering, no permitting, no utility relocation, land cost, nothing like that, just simply construction. In Virginia, we have the Tyson's Old Meadow Pedestrian Bridge over Route 495. That was completed in 2022 at a cost of $8 million. The Lane Place Pedestrian Bridge over Route 295. We don't have final construction costs in that. It is, it was recently completed in August of 2024. I don't have a final cost in construction, but the bid tabs were 10.8 to 12.4 million. Both of these bridges, there's an attached photo for you to see. You can see this is a steel box truss design. This is over approximately six lanes of 495 or 295. One of them is a clear shot across all the 295, the Tyson's one, I believe there's a pier supporting the middle, to give you an idea of what would be needed for something over Route 50 in that Ken Island corridor. And then I found some information from KCI. They are currently under contract with the town of Easton to develop drawings and a partial design for pedestrian overpass over Route 50. That would be four lanes of Route 50, not, not six, it'd be slightly smaller. But their estimate right now for construction is about $9 million. One of the interesting part is, is that the pedestrian bridge has to be built at a higher elevation than a, than a typical overpass for vehicles. It's at 17.9. That cost increases the abutment cost because you have to get the AD ramps up to that height. 17.9 is the standard, however, if you have existing overpasses nearby that are at a higher elevation, you have to go higher by a foot. I don't know the elevations of, of the Route 8 overpass or the Route 18 overpass, but that could come into play. If, if they're higher than normal or higher, closer to 17.9, you'd have to go a foot higher, get it taller for safety reasons. They do not want a pedestrian bridge hit by vehicle traffic, as we saw on 295, that was knocked down a few years ago. And that is the Lane Place Pedestrian Bridge that's listed on here and that just opened back up. So it should be added that here for the Tyson's one of $8 million, the total cost for the project was really about 13, one, 13 and a half, and you add in everything else like design, utilities, those kinds of things. The Lane Place Pedestrian Bridge, which the construction's about 10.8 to 12.4, the total cost in on that is about 22 to 25 million. So currently, we have several locations selected for a preliminary study through Kimberly Horn. Of those three, there's no final decision on where to go. In addition, our preliminary conversations with State Highway has indicated that they would like to see the Route 8 overpass evaluated for pedestrian traffic versus the construction of pedestrian bridge separate. So it would be suggested that if we move forward with a study to look at those three sites and nailing down a final location, we'd have to look at those three sites and the Route 8 overpass. So really, it's a study of looking at four locations and evaluating those for where would be the best place to put a pedestrian overpass. There is some money through the Baltimore Metropolitan Council, about $120,000 that could be used for this. And they also have contracts that they can sole source to RK&amp;K. This is, I believe, Steve, how much is the match for that?
It would be 80% would, could be covered by federal funding if the funds are available. And then 20% would be a local match. And I say funds being available, we, what we would do is we'd set up an initial meeting, discuss and nail down a scope of work, get that cost estimate, and then whatever that cost estimate would be, 80% would be federally covered and 20% local.
We could come back with that and we could choose to move, at that time, choose to move forward with the study and look at those four locations and come up with a game plan on how to move forward.
Okay.
So you're thinking that the cost, just ballpark, I know you've got ranges all over the place, but, I mean, I'm just looking at, thinking of what Jeff had in there for a placeholder at 20 million, that, that, that's the total project cost, that wouldn't be our 20%, right?
Look. Yeah, 22, 22, so 23 million.
What Steve's talking about is the study cost.
Right, I'm talking.
Construction cost.
Yeah, I'm past all that.
There is no, there is no match for any of that at this time.
Okay.
It would be a 100% county fund.
The overpass itself?
Yes.
It wouldn't be. Because it said grants on his thing, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up.
We're, we've been pursuing grants for several years now, federal earmarks for the bridge. We've been unsuccessful. Everybody likes the project. I mean, you know, our federal partners and state partners, I think it, it's a great project, connects all the dots, it gets, you know, across the highway, it's alternative transportation, connects the schools and, you know, the shopping centers, but we just haven't successfully landed a, a grant large enough for the construction phase. So we wanted to go ahead and try to nail down the location, do this evaluation, as Shane mentioned, and we had a call with Secretary Pines and, and MDOT, and I think they, you know, they really want us to also look at the, you know, potential for putting that pedestrian crossing over.
On the overpass.
On the existing overpass, which we're not really excited about because of the, you know, conflicts with traffic, but, you know, that's, that's kind of their ask for us.
Restripe it.
To, to look at that as a, as a, as a means.
Make no changes to it, just restripe it?
So you can make a little bit of, like a bike lane on, on the existing overpass.
Yeah, that's pure craziness.
It's a, it's a dangerous intersection already, so.
I'm sure it's going to be, I'm sure it'd be a little more than just striping, but I, you know, they're going to ask us to evaluate that.
10-foot Jersey wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Big difference.
I mean, that's, mm, okay.
Yeah.
So you need a motion? Is that what? Move to allow staff to work with the Baltimore Metropolitan Council and RK&amp;K to develop a scope of the services and costs for a final location study of the county's proposed route 50 pedestrian bridge crossing for Commissioners' review and approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved.
The price for connectivity.
Well, not to say we're not going to continue to pursue grant opportunities, and we will very vigorously, and we've, we've been working on that for years, but we will definitely do that, so.
All right, Commissioners, the second item is informational. It is also tab two, item two, pages five and six, and this is an update that Steve Cahoon's going to provide for us this evening on the Tier 2 NEPA process for the New Bay Bridge.
Yes.
Bridges.
So considering an overpass there, you know, we're definitely keeping an eye on the Tier 2 NEPA, considering all our traffic issues and our pilot projects for ramp closures, you know, we're always watching and working with MDTA on all this bay crossing study. So right now, we're about two years into the bay crossing study, and they've completed the purpose and need statement, and they've put a, put that online and has made it available for the public to see. And what they've been doing is trying to start very broadly at looking at all the possible options for a bay crossing at the current location and started to narrow down what they actually will study and look into over the next two years. So they're starting to exclude specific types of structures, specific options, and they're starting to narrow in on what type of structure, how many lanes, what type of facility will be built and where. So this is the first time we're really seeing, starting to get more specifics on, on what could happen here. And by eliminating some of these options with what's left, it gives us the direction that they're moving in. What we know so far and what will be shared at, at three open houses coming up, MDTA will be holding three open houses. One, a virtual open house on Wednesday, December 4th. They'll also hold an open house in Anarundel County on Monday, December 9th, and they will be holding an open house here at Queen Anne's County High School Wednesday, December 11th. And those open houses meetings will have a number of display boards.
Ken Island High.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken Island High School, Wednesday, December 11th. The, those, those open houses will have a number of display boards and a lot of information to share with the public about what they've been looking at, what options have been eliminated and what options they're going to retain to, to continue to review and look at. All that information is currently online, so residents don't have to wait for the open house. If they're interested in seeing the progress that's made, that is already online and available. And just to, to give a quick summary, kind of the direction this study is going, they will, the study will recommend replacement of both of the existing spans of the bridge. We've recognized this as a replacement project for the two existing spans, and the study is saying that. The study will no longer look at tunnel options, bridge tunnel options, or a double-decker bridge. They've been considered and reviewed and they've been deemed to have a significant impact and a, a full bridge crossing this bay will have less impact than a tunnel or a bridge tunnel. So a full bridge crossing the bay is what they're going to continue to look at. They're looking at keeping the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way and the existing alignment. They're not going to go off alignment. They're going to try to locate the two existing bridges either very close to the north span or very close to the south span and tap into the existing right-of-way as quickly as possible when they hit the shore lines. So they're not going to try to take any other alignments, they're going to stay within the existing 5301 alignment. They are looking at, they are still considering different options for how many lanes will be on Ken Island and in Anarundel County on the approaches and how many lanes will be on the bridge. Right now, they're considering six and eight lanes on Ken Island and Anarundel County approaching the bridge, and they're considering eight and 10 lanes on the actual bridge. So.
That, you say lanes, but shoulders are considered a lane?
No. This, this would be travel lanes, shoulders would be in addition to those, those lanes.
Okay.
So currently, our current bay bridge does not have shoulders and does not have that extra space, and it doesn't meet current design standards. The new bridge will have to meet current design standards with shoulders.
Isn't that a traffic nightmare already before you even build it? Because you're going to take 10, back down to six, and you're just going to have people slowing down and backing up again, and that's, that's just a nightmare. I'm sorry.
Well, the, the, the option, the options they're looking at is six lanes on either side and an eight-lane bridge, or eight lanes on either side and an eight-lane bridge, or 10, eight lanes on either side and a 10-lane bridge. So they're, they're still looking at a mix of, of different options.
But I'm just saying, with all your traffic experience, doesn't eight to eight make sense in, in your mind?
Yes, the, the, there are some advantages of having a 10-lane bridge.
Emergency services.
With, yeah, for emergency services, transit, repair and maintenance, having those extra lanes could help.
Case you have to close some other tracks.
But under normal flow, it would make sense to just have eight going to eight, going to eight, right? I mean.
Yeah, if everything's flowing good and no repair, maintenance inspections.
Yeah, you're talking about when you're coming off the bridge and you can't, and then you're going to make it forward to three lanes also, right?
That would be.
Meaning the infrastructure, it's the.
So, so right now.
To, down square to 404.
Yes, so right now, they're considering the existing six lanes, at, at keeping the existing six lanes. They're also considering widening it to eight lanes.
Now, is there any talk about doing local and through traffic setups like they do in Northern Virginia to keep?
Express lane, if you're not getting off.
They, they have considered those options, and those take significantly more right-of-way, and they have a confined amount of right-of-way, so they really don't feel that they have enough right-of-way to accommodate the, the local-only lanes or express lanes through, because when you create those, you also have to have on and off ramps where people can get to and from those lanes.
But, well, since.
When you make that commitment on either side of the bridge?
Well, they need to look at Northern Virginia then, because I go up and down there and, and I traveled years ago before, when it was a nightmare, and no, when you're in that express, you have two opportunities and they're about 30 miles apart.
Yeah. So you make that commitment either on, either side of the bridge, depending on the direction you're going. You make that commitment then.
It's not our traffic.
And you're on it all the way to the, till you can finally get off.
And it's not our traffic, so I don't care if there are inconvenience.
So the right-of-way constraints are a real issue with, with them, and that's what,
and they will have information about considering those options, and we can comment on those. Part, part of all this is, this is an open comment period based on the information that'll be presented at the open houses, and we're. that'll be presented at the open houses, and we're gonna be preparing comments. So, you know, that's part of this process. What they're, they want comments on the options they're eliminating. They would like options on the, on the, comments on the options they're retaining as well to get the public's input on the direction to move.
Northern Virginia, another scan on the hot lanes that the commissioner will look into. But the Douglas Toll Road, which is, I don't know, ten, twenty miles long, was a private enterprise, and they were able to finance it through private money, and the tolls paid off the investors. So going from Ken Island to Easton, they would pay for the road, they would widen it. Of course, they'd have to have state access to the property, and that would be the hot lane that they're using in Northern Virginia so well.
So this study area is looking from the fifty-three-oh-one split. When we're talking about widening in the number of lanes, it would be from the fifty-three-oh-one split across the bridge to the Route Two interchange. That's the study area for the bay crossing study. And so when we're talking about the different number of lanes, the highway lanes would be from the fifty-three-oh-one split to Route Two. As far as transit goes, they're looking at bus service, but they're not looking at high-capacity transit or ferry any longer. A lot of those options have been discounted. They are looking at, as far as congestion management, they are gonna continue to look at congestion pricing for the toll facility, interchange consolidation, which means the adjustment of exit ramps as they widen. As they widen the highway, they'll need to limit access on and off. So that's something we're gonna pay attention to. Add additional parks and rides, and then with the shoulders, you know, will they need to accommodate part-time shoulder use for emergency situations? And so those options are gonna continue to be looked at. And then there has been significant interest about having a shared-use path for bike and ped on the bridge as well. So at this point, they're keeping that as an option on the bridge and gonna continue to study that further. And from where they are now, they're holding open houses here in December of 2024. As they move into 2025, they'll work to refine some of those options, like the number of lanes, the types of congestion management, what exit ramps may be closed, those types of things. And then in summer of 2025, we hope to have a final idea of what's going to be proposed. And then they have a public hearing process that they would go through for NEPA about a year from now. That, then, following that hearing process, they would need to make a final decision and get a final written decision from federal highways. And we're talking about two years from now when that would occur. So when I say we're in the middle of the process, we're about two years in, and we have about another two years before there's a final record of decision in this NEPA process.
Very good. Thanks, Steve. I know you go to all the meetings and, you know, you meet with the Baltimore Metropolitan Transit people too. So it's, this is a long and drawn-out process, but it's to protect the project, actually. You know, without these processes, somebody's gonna challenge it, and, you know, that's the whole purpose of the NEPA so that when they get done, it should be water-tight, so...
So, so if I understood what you said, you're saying that you anticipate that the NEPA study will be done in the next two years?
Correct, correct. The final, final outcome of the NEPA process is a record of decision saying, this is what we're gonna build, and this is what we're gonna move forward with. That record of decision allows them to get into permitting and construction.
Okay.
So that, those, and those are separate decisions to be made later in the process. Now, I do want to touch on one thing that, um, with the bridge and talking about constructing a full span across the bay, they are talking about a two-bridge option to replace the existing two bridges. They looked at the size and the type of construction that it would take to put eight or ten lanes on a single bridge and felt that it was too big of a construction project, too costly. And by doing it in two bridges, it gives them more flexibility in how and when they would approach construction of each bridge and how they would take down the existing bridge.
So you're saying four and four?
It could be four and four if they decide on eight, or five and five if they decide on ten.
And what that'll give them, honestly, it gives them some breathing room. So if they build south of the existing two-lane bridge now, put up a four-lane bridge or five-lane bridge, that could be, you know, built, installed, opened. So now, you know, now you have eight lanes, or you have seven lanes, and that relieves some of the congestion and allows them some time possibly to get more money together, you know, and see how their finances work out, so. I mean, I get it. I mean, that would bring relief. It just wouldn't bring a lot of relief, but I think that would help immensely.
There is a good video on their webpage showing how they could phase two, two-bridge construction. They would build one bridge, take one bridge down, build a second bridge, take the second bridge down. And then these bridges will be taller to allow for larger ships to get to the port.
Same with the Key Bridge, yeah. They've already been designed for the bigger ships. So, you know, and if you look at the alignment of the way the bridges are now, the three-lane bridge, you have to belly all the way out, you know, to the north. And so, you know, by going further on the southern end of it with the first bridge, that might bring that back into alignment once they start tearing down other bridges. So, you know, it's interesting to see the process for sure. But have you gotten any word on engineering and design, how long it would take before construction? Anybody whispering?
At this point, it's gonna take, you know, following, um, construction, the purpose and need and the notice of intent did outline that they could be looking at doing permitting in 2020, 2030 and 2031, which would allow construction in the 2032 timeframe. But the timeframes for construction and design, I don't know at this point.
Okay.
Not sure what we're building yet, so.
Yeah.
Or is being built yet, so.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate the update.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
All right, commissioners, we can move into the action items for this evening. We have eleven action items, so if you want to flip over to tab number three. So we have tab three, item one, page one. First up, we have the proclamation twenty-four dash four-nine, Small Business Saturday.
So I have the pleasure of reading that, proclamation twenty-four forty-nine. Whereas the Queen Anne's County Commissioners celebrate our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-four point seven million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-one point one percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five. And small businesses employ forty-five point nine percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas sixty-eight cents of every dollar spent on a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional forty-eight cents in local businesses' activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas fifty-nine percent of the U.S.'s consumers aware of Small Businesses Saturday shop or ate at small independently-owned retail or restaurants on Small Business Saturday in 2023. Whereas the Queen Anne's County Commissioners support our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community, communities. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the county have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving to be Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the Queen Anne's County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November thirtieth, 2024, as a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and the communities across the county, country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its fifteenth year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year. Some staggering numbers.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Dimanell. That's great. Okay, commissioners, item number two on pages two and three. This is from the, actually, it's from the Board of Education, but it's to identify their FY twenty-six project support letter. And this is a letter that would go to the State Capital Request Board. And these are the projects they want to include in our FY twenty-six budget for state shared revenue. They include the Canard Elementary School HVAC system replacement, Mattapeak Elementary School, a partial roof replacement, Canard Elementary School, a complete roof replacement, the Bayside Elementary School, a storefront replacement, and the Kent Island Elementary School, a fire alarm replacement. So they would, if we send this letter in, that shows that we are gonna commit to our portion of the funding for the state shared piece for these projects in the FY twenty-six budget.
Is this six point five built into your numbers, Jeff?
Yeah. The only new project we talked about on this list was a couple weeks ago, a couple meetings ago, was the Bayside Elementary School storefront replacement. So that's the only addition that was not in the capital plan from before. So these are, these are in the plan.
I move to sign the support and funding commitment letter to the Interagency Commission on School Construction, which would approve the county's share of funding for the reference projects for fiscal year of 2026.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Item three on pages four through seven is for the four fifty-seven B Governance Committee update. And we are recommending, that committee is recommending a minor revision to the bylaws due to the addition of the recently adopted four oh one A plan, providing that small employee employer match for the participants in the four fifty-seven B plan.
I move to approve the Governance Committee bylaws as revised.
Second.
You have a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item four on pages eight through ten, wreaths across America. This is the twenty twenty-four program drive. Benedict A. Andrew, American Legion, is seeking sponsorships again this year for wreaths to be placed at the Eastern Shore Veterans Cemetery in Hurlock, Maryland.
I move to sponsor twenty twenty-four wreaths across America in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Attaboy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
That was ten thousand, you said, Commissioner?
Yeah.
All right, great. Okay, item five on pages eleven and twelve. This is a request for a letter of support from Shore Rivers, for Shore Rivers Living Shoreline Construction at Avalon Farm. They're seeking, they're submitting a grant application from Maryland Department of Natural Resources for shoreline restorations at Avalon Farm. This is down along Little Creek, across from Little Creek Public Landing. We did support this project back in twenty-three. They received some monies for design services, and the construction is the next phase. They're seeking funding for that. The construction cost estimate is one and a half million. Yeah.
I move to execute the letter of support to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for Shore Rivers Living Shoreline Construction at Avalon Farm.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You got him, bud.
Okay, all right. Thank you, commissioners. Item six on pages thirteen to fourteen, this is a request from our Health Department. They want a contract for the Diabetes Prevention Program. They want a contract with Eastern Shore Area Health Education as the sole source provider for this program with an option to renew for an additional five years for twenty-five thousand per year. They do have enough funding for this, the balance of this fiscal year, so that that is covered.
I move to approve the Queen Anne's County Department of Health contract with Eastern Shore Area Health Education as a sole source provider for the Diabetes Prevention Program for the remaining fiscal year with the option to renew for an additional five successive years in the amount of twenty-five thousand.
Second. You have a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. The next four items, I believe, are from our Director of Economic Development and Tourism. So item number seven, we have on pages fifteen through nineteen. This is the Maryland Alcohol Manufacturing Promotion Fund Grant Application. So we are looking to get approval to apply for a hundred thousand dollars for this program to market our local breweries, wineries, and distilleries. And if we get the grant, we'll be using this money to build a long-term marketing strategy for those endeavors.
I move to support the Economic and Tourism Development in their application for the Maryland Alcohol Manufacturing Promotion Fund.
Second.
You have a motion, second. Any discussion? Really?
Get us the money.
Alcohol, okay.
Yeah.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, go get it, Heather. All right, item eight on page twenty is the Maryland Two Fifty Inclusive History Grant. Looking to get approval to apply for a four thousand dollar grant for this inclusive history program to support research programming and interpretive projects to deepen public understanding of our complex history here in Queen Anne's County. And this would be used to support the Maryland, or excuse me, the MD Two Fifty for the semi-quincentennial scheduled for July fourth, twenty twenty-six.
It's a mouthful.
Yeah.
I have a motion that the Queen Anne's County Commissioners support QAC economic tourism development and their application for Maryland Two Fifty Inclusive History Grant.
Second.
You have a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor...
Aye.
That's the, that's the limit.
That's the limit. You're taking, you're asking for all of it, Patrick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item number nine on page twenty-one, as you know, we are part of the Chesapeake Country Scenic Byway Alliance, which includes Queen Anne's, Kent, Cecil, Caroline, Talbot, Dorchester, and Somerset Counties, Wycomb, Co., and Warchester. And so far, Dorchester has acted as the fiscal agent for the organization. And they are now asking that Ms. Tinelli here, Queen Anne's County, act as our fiscal agent going forward.
I move to support Economic Tourism Development to be the fiduciary agent for Chesapeake Country All-American Road National Scenic Byways Program Grant. Now, that's a mouthful.
Do we have a motion, a second. Any discussions?
It's good to see Heather taking on some responsibilities.
I'm telling you.
That's right.
Because like she's been coasting.
Not a lot of idle time on her hands.
Coasting for years.
All those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, this next one's the one we want. Now, this is also item ten on pages twenty-two and twenty-three. Now, we want to have Ms. Tinelli apply for a large grant, somewhere in the range of four hundred to six hundred and twenty-five thousand from, for our National Scenic Byways to begin the implementation phase of the Chesapeake Country All-American Road Project. And if we receive those funds, we'll be doing additional new signage for the Chesapeake Heritage and Visitor Center and additional locations throughout the county. So we have a small match requirement there of twenty-five hundred, but we can find that.
I move to support Economic and Tourism Development and Chesapeake Country Scenic Byway Alliance in their application for Chesapeake Country All-American Road National Scenic Byways Program Grant, and that we execute the letter of support as part of the application.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I think it's interesting that Commissioner McLaughlin would think that you were actually gonna leave money on the table.
All right.
Hold on, can you give us an update on the ferries? Where's it staying and what's going on and...
Yes, so as you know, we finished the feasibility study and provided those results in August at May. Yes. So as you know, we finished the feasibility study and, and provided those results in August at Mako. Antarctica County has applied for funding through the federal government through infrastructure funding for two ferries. It might be three. Sorry, I can't remember. And Queen Anne's County wrote a letter of support for that and they were awarded that funding. So right now, they're, they're looking at how to implement that. They didn't receive the full amount. I don't know what the amount was, but they did receive a good portion of that funding, looking at a commuter ferry system, same kind of ferries that we were looking at for the tourism side of things. So that's in play and we'll be, our transportation department will be working with their, Antarctica County Transportation Department as far as how to, to help implement that, where the stop would be on Queen Anne's County side. It's, I'm assuming Mattapeak, but that hasn't been worked out yet. As far as the ferry feasibility study, we're getting ready to start the second phase of that. We also received grant funding, or Antarctica County did, for destination development. And what that means is looking at the stops here in Queen Anne's County, which are Mattapeak and Cat Narrows, on how do we make sure that the infrastructure's there? How do we make sure that when people get off, they can get from, if it's our site, you know, if it's the Heritage Center where they're dropped off, how do they get from us over to where the hotels and over to where the restaurants are? How do we make sure we have all those amenities? So we're doing that now. That starts in January. And then also in January, we're going to be outreach to the county commissioners and the towns and the different organizations to make sure they understand what exactly this ferry system will look like and then also looking for funding. So there'll be another shift of work to start. A lot of work to do because it's a lot of money to come up with, but we're still working it. Little law here, but the destination development will be key because then we know that we have a product that when people come here, that they are going to have plenty to do, which we already know, but, you know, to put it on pen to paper will be important.
Is Visiting Annapolis still involved? It doesn't seem like you hear their name anymore.
Yes.
And Antarctica County's kind of taken a lead now.
Yeah, yeah. Well, when they received the grant funding, a portion of that funding was for administrative. So they hired a person that handled the administrative side of it. We met every week, every Thursday and went through that process. And now we meet, we meet every other Thursday with all the same counties to kind of talk about what the next steps will be. So they're still very actively involved. The grant that was applied for, that they recently received, was applied for through their county government, not Visiting Annapolis. So their, the Antarctica County Transportation, Sam Snead and I don't remember the other gentleman's names, but they were the ones that applied for that grant. So Antarctica County's all in on the ferry.
Yeah. Yes, they are. Very good. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather. Thanks, Heather. Outstanding work and we look forward to some updates, positive news on these opportunities here for additional grant dollars. Thank you. Our last item, commissioners, is item 11, Budget Amendment CC4. This is for legal services. This budget amendment establishes budget authority for the establishment of our new in-house office of law along with additional contracted attorney expenditures that'll carry us through for the end of this fiscal year.
I move to approve Budget Amendment CC4.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Attorneys, Phil.
Yeah, tell him. Sounds like a good deal.
Sounds like a good deal.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was a painful.
Opposed? There you go. Five oh. Sounds like a good deal.
And this whole process is a savings, right?
That's right.
It is, actually, for, I think in the long run, it will be for the county having moving the, some of the attorneys in-house with what our legal spend is for different commissions and boards. It makes sense. The county's going to get to that, that point now.
Bruce, do you have anything? And there's no one here to speak because Beth, she's camera shy. She don't want to get in front of the microphone.
That's why she's in that seat.
We won't do that to her. So, roundtable. Patrick, you're up. Maybe you're already up and going. Patrick?
So, um.
You were muted.
We lost a 14th minute person, Catherine Ley, L-E-D-G. Send my heartfelt condolences after my family. Also, Bobby Bell and her team at the Old Outlets with quite a few volunteers served 600 people for Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Day Dinner. So 600 people got turkey and stuffing and potatoes and just incredible community outreach. And she's been doing it, they've been doing it for 20 years. I mean, I asked her, I went down to represent the county commissioners and they were, they were happy to, to see that we were looking in on them. And I'd like to, well, I'd like us to do a proclamation. I'll get some more information and send it to you guys, or send it to, to the team and acknowledge them for the incredible work they've been doing in our community. They said, I mean, 600 is the most amount of folks that they ever served. And the economy is worse than we think it is. Most of the folks picked it up, but they also had delivery people. They probably delivered 50 or so for shut-ins that couldn't get out. So just a shout.
Thank you. All righty. Dos?
Yep. Congratulations to the Queen Anne's County High School girls soccer.
Proud of them.
State champions.
Sure.
And have everybody have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
There you go.
I had, just real quick, I had the opportunity to attend the Chesapeake Charities Luncheon that they do each year and to honor some, some folks that do amazing things in our, in our community and on the eastern shore. It was the first time I'd ever got a chance to experience it. It was definitely who's who. In fact, I had the pleasure of sitting next to former Governor Bob Ehrlich for lunch, who was one of the presenters. So a great event. Other than that, yes, to pigtail on Jack. Please drive carefully and enjoy your time with family and be grateful and thankful for all you have.
All right, yeah. Over the weekend, Commissioner Wilson and myself got to attend.
I showed up later.
You showed up later? Okay. The Josh Corsi-Willess had the unveiling for the, the trail signs that he, he has installed along the Cross Island Trail and sort of an intro video of a documentary that he's putting together. But I, he did a great job of putting it together and he applied for a grant from the county commissioners in order to get those signs there. And just so, you know, another lesson to people, you know, skate park is, we have a skate park because some kids got together and they came to county, they said, we want a skate park. They put a presentation together and we listened and they got it. Animal abuse law that we just put, Kathy Trotter, she had an idea, citizen had an idea, came forward, said, you know, here's something I'd like to see done. Josh had an idea to improve our trails, came forward and said, here's something I want to do. So, you know, if you're people out there, citizens, you have ideas, come forward, talk to commissioners and you would be surprised, you know, probably how easy it is to get a project from an idea and put it into action if you're willing as the citizen to, you know, get behind it. We support lots of things, so I would encourage more people to do that. That was a great thing that Josh, I'm, I'm waiting to see the documentary he's doing with the watermen is amazing, right?
Did you get to see it, Jim?
Did you see that?
Yeah, it was really good.
I mean, when I was in high school, my senior year, after my senior year and then the, my first year back home from college, I worked at Piney Narrows at the, at the fuel, right? It's all the watermen would be coming up, you know, during the week and fueling up and you got to hear all the stories and they're just.
Salt of the earth.
Yes, right. Just the characters like that is what the eastern shore is. And getting to see that video and their stories about how, you know, how the Narrows has changed over the years, how, how hard it is for watermen, but what they go through, like, they've got great stories. I'm looking forward for that documentary. I mean, that's, that's the eastern shore right there.
The guy from the DNR or something. I was just going to say, that's a job you should have quit early.
So I, I hope when that's finished that there is a, you know, a big, we should, you know, Parks does the outdoor movies. That should be a movie that we do.
Absolutely.
Outdoors in the summertime and get the public out to see that. Because, I mean, the watermen, the farmers, that's who built Queen Anne's County.
So, Jim, you probably went to it, it was probably about six, seven years ago.
Yes, at the college.
Well, they had the one, they had the one up the VFW, the very first one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The Waterman Stories. Remember, they had them all. Because that was when Sonny was still alive and they had like eight of them, a butterball and all were up there. Oh, I mean, I've never laughed so hard in an hour and a half in my life. I mean, some of the stuff that they come up with. Oh, yeah. It's just crazy. And, and you're not a true waterman until you've been on a boat that sank underneath of you. Those guys all had a story about ice crushed this, did that, oh, you know.
Or fall in the water.
Rigid cold and you got your waders on it and they fill up with water. So, you know, I mean, Josh did a great job and he's got, he says, Phase two and three, he's working on now and he'll keep going as long as he can get some funding. I said, that's not, that shouldn't be a problem at all for them. But what I liked is, is that, all the different buildings.
Yeah.
He had the pictures and, you know, and I use the trail a lot and so does a lot of people in Queen Anne's County. And you go by and you see an old house and you go, man, what, what's going on with that? And he has the story behind it.
Yeah.
Who lived there and, you know, it's just, it, it's interesting. And, you know, we discussed how long these are going to last and how they could be switched out and, and, you know, replaced. And it's, it's, it's great. It is good. You done, boss?
Yep, that's it. Yep.
I'm going to say first and foremost, watch the weather. Watch the weather, safe travels, Thanksgiving, but, you know, come Friday, come Saturday, I checked for the next two weeks, every night the lows are in the low, low twenties. So it's going to get cold and it's going to get slippery, so be careful with that. This last week, I, I sit on, on the Drug Free Coalition and we went out to speak and we normally do this, we're going to say we, it's Sheriff Hoffman, State's Attorney, Lance Richardson and myself. And we go out to the junior highs and we speak to seventh graders or eighth graders about the perils of opioids and, and drugs and vaping, the whole nine yards. And we did Mattapeak and then we went to do Stevensville. And in Stevensville, it struck me, I go last and I, I asked the students, you know, how many people here have lost a loved one to an overdose? And seven kids jumped up and raised their hands. And I mean, that, that really hits home. When you get someone in seventh grade that has a loved one that's passed away, so. But, you know, my esteemed colleague, Mr. Dimonell here, is going to take my, I can't make the ones at Sudlersville and Centerville. He's got, you got PowerPoint and it, they sat there and they listened and, and it was a great experience. And, you know, it's something where we're planting a seed now that hopefully four, five, seven, 10 years from now, you know, they'll remember a little bit of this because some of this stuff is interesting in how, how it's presented. But, you know, we, we hope to, you know, saving a life is what it's all about and it's our number one job. So, you know, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to do that. Phil, you're going to do great for me on Monday, the, the second. So I'm looking forward to that. And, and Jack, one more time, when do you become president for Mako?
December 14th?
12.
12?
12. What day of the week is that?
Thursday night.
It's a Thursday night. Okay. The 12th. Okay.
I think it's 12, 13, something like that.
All right, cool. What was that, Patrick?
He's, he's trying.
Yeah, it's a 12th.
Is it possible?
You know, as we approached this date, you know, Jack, I, I think it's funny. Jack always tries to play this down. But this is something that he has prepared for, for four years? Maybe even longer?
Six.
This is a big deal.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a huge deal to be sworn in as the Mako president.
When was the last time that Queen Anne's County had a president of Mako?
1982.
1982.
So it's a big deal, Jack, and you're going to be great. You're going to be great.
Looking forward to it.
Don't screw it up.
And on, and on that.
A lot riding on you, Jack. I'm just saying. Don't embarrass your county.
Oh, man.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. On favor?